Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande and beyond and beyond broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off.
So when I was working on Selena, the series for Netflix to play the role of Abraham Quintanilla, I put on a specific amount of weight, which I was fine doing, but also realizing it could be difficult to get that weight off. I got back into my physical regimen with James Leha, but I was still having trouble with just those last amounts. And that's when I got to meet Arturo from Laredo Medical Weight Loss Clinic. And just the products that he gave me kind of put me over the edge. Feel great about myself.
Hi, I'm Don McLaughlin. I'm candidate for House District 80, which consists of Webb County, Uvalde County, Demet County, Zavala County, Frio County, and Atascosa County. I'm also a small businessman, and I know what it takes to run a small business. And for too long, we've had too much government regulation coming into our small business and making it tougher and tougher for us to survive and get by. And that's one of the things I hope to change. We need to... Small business is the backbone of the state of Texas. And we need to make sure it thrives and that they have the support they need in government and less government regulation.
We're back at Gloves Off, and today I've got a great guest, Daniel Benavides, who is a candidate for Laredo City Council District 4, correct?
Correct.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. It's a pleasure. No, thank you for coming out. And number one, thank you for standing up. And I told this to everybody, it takes a lot of courage to put your name on the dotted line.
Thank you.
Especially when you're going to run for an open position like that.
Right, and it's not something to take lightly because public office is a high responsibility. I think one of the highest responsibilities, probably only second to serving the country.
Absolutely. And we want to thank all our people that are first responders out there, that are out there, and all our veterans, as well as our soldiers that are overseas. And also for that tragedy that happened yesterday in Georgia. I mean, we have to look at mental health in a different format. Prayer for the families over there, our condolences.
Absolutely. As a former teacher, I think one of the most, the highest concerns was every beginning of the school year, thinking of how to protect our students.
Absolutely.
And in some ways, you know, teachers are on that line of defense too. You know, I think it was in the early 2000s when we started doing active shooter drills
Absolutely.
in schools. And it's a whole other thing when you're the teacher on the other side that's having to keep kids calm.
Absolutely. And we have the technology to do better. I think there's a lot of things that we can learn. You know, the first, active shooting drills and stuff like this was actually started in Germany in the 30s. But what happened was that here in the States, everybody really caught on after Columbine, okay? We were missing the red flags. We're not paying attention to those red flags. And I tell people that because I did secure it in the past. And, you know, in my younger years, I was a lot stupid than what I was. So a friend of mine got me involved in executive protection, which we did. So it was always trying to protect the principal, but now the principal's a bunch of kids. And that's our main priority. And what occurs is that a lot of us do not understand the red flags that are seen. We as parents sometimes are not paying attention to the flags that have been given to our kids. You know, and you can agree as an educator that there's a lot of problems with bullying in school. Absolutely. Most school districts don't take care of the situation. They actually kind of just kick the can down the street. And when something violent occurs, when the person that's being bullied turns around and defends themselves, he ends up becoming the perpetrator. He's the one that gets in trouble. But there's a huge, you know, that's what I try to tell parents, but it's a problem that's ongoing. It's always been.
Right.
And we better understand how to deal with it. And that's my pet peeve, I guess, you know, because here, as you can see, we've been teaching people to deal with that problem for a very long time. The school just started, and I've gotten about 20 calls that my kids are being bullied. But the parents don't do anything about it. Martial arts, of course, is one way to get rid of it. But it's not because you're going to go over there and beat up the person, but it's something that's going to give you confidence. You have to get your child out of that situation and build your confidence.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, social emotional learning was a really big thing for me when I was in the classroom. And it really helped me understand better everything that my students were dealing with when they walked in, right? So a big motivation for why I'm seeking public office was it started when I was a first-year teacher. And you have students walking in with so many things that they're carrying, right? They don't leave their home life at home. We want to think that, but that's not the reality. And students and families need so much, right? So I think, thinking as an educator, I really care about trauma-informed care, about the after-school opportunities we can provide for students, being able to provide resources so that families ensure that their students are making it to school and back from school safely.
Absolutely.
And as an aspiring parent, right, in Laredo, I see what my nieces and nephews and my little sisters, what they deal with in schools and the need that is there, right, to be able to support the whole ecosystem, right? Because it's not just what happens in schools, it's everything about the whole child, right? If we care about the future of Laredo, we need to think about how we are supporting families.
We better. And that's something that brings back with, you know, I did a study now, and you've seen that, is Laredo's ranked 10th in poverty. That's not in Texas, that's in the United States. And when we get to that level, it's, there's a problem there. You got, you got some families that both parents are working two jobs. And people forget that the base income of both families is $40,000, okay? And people say, "No, no, because we're the number one land port." Okay, but how about the rest?
And it begs the question of how do we justify the, you know, the quality of living that should be higher in Laredo because of the significance that we hold economically to the country and I would say even internationally, right? So many goods come through our town, and in a lot of ways, Laredo fuels the rest of the country. So why are we only competing for one of the highest poverty ranks? Why aren't we competing for one of the best qualities of life? And the constant issues with our infrastructure also beg that question because how are we to maintain that status if we can't, if we can't better our own infrastructure for our people, for the people that live here? Not for, not only for the passersby, sorry. That's important too, but for the people that live here.
No, you're correct. And what happens, and I see that, and I see that here, because we get, we get a lot of kids that, we used to do a lot of programs with the county that we should teach for free. We did a lot of scholarships for free. And I literally stopped it this year. The reason I did was because the kids were not being brought. So we're back into the drawing stage. I put all the committees together, and I said, "You guys have an objective to do this, and we're working with some of the commissioners because of what county issue." And I said, "Maybe next year we can hit it again and go directly to the centers where we can get some of these kids." Because we're getting kids that were from Peñitas and from Rio Bravo and from all over the place coming here because we didn't charge, we just charged what was paid for by the third-party funding of the county was basically their uniforms and everything else that was there. And the teaching we get for free. And as part of USA Salat, that's what we did, right? But when we look at that and you start seeing why they're not coming, was because the grandmother can't drive them. Their parents are out to work, they don't come. So we basically have to redraw back what we're doing. And those kids that were in the program, all of them, the vast majority, except for the little guys, were honor roll students. And a lot, some of them, we're like 90%, we had to, you know, we tracked the record. And some of them came here with Cs, were doing Bs. That's an improvement.
Of course, yeah.
The ones who were doing Bs were doing As, you know? You know what I'm saying? And that's magnificent. You might have a kid that, you know, he's a C student, but you give him an extra push, he becomes a B student, you start getting that discipline.
And, you know, I'm glad that you're proud of community centers and rec centers because I feel like those are massive tools if we're able to leverage them appropriately, right? So one of the things that I want to look into when I'm elected is how do we re-staff the rec centers, right? I have the Margarito Benavides Rec Center maybe like a five-minute distance from where I live, and Kate Tarver's right there, right? So how are we using these community spaces to provide that added support? As you mentioned, right, like maybe we go there, maybe we leave it open from 5:00 to 7:00. Maybe we make sure that there is some extra funding for those after-school programs that are able to enrich students' lives because if it wasn't for all the extracurricular activities that I was able to partake in and the support that I had in schools to be able to do that, I can't say that I would be where I am, right? That I went off to college. I was the first of, I'm the oldest of nine, and there's five of us that have graduated college. And it was, it was on me, right, to sort of set that path. But also, I didn't do it alone, right? And I think that we have to think about the make or break moments and the make or break factors that are going to determine our, Laredo and its lives. Because it shouldn't be their zip code, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be their socioeconomic status. It should be their potential. And it is our job as elected officials and leaders in the community, as yourself, right? I admire everything that you have done to, because you kind of put that onus on you, right? And you're like, "What can I do?" And I think that we need more of that everywhere, but especially in the highest ranks of who is helping decide how our taxpayer dollars are being spent? And are they being spent to support the future generations? Or are we, are we missing the forest for the trees?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because, yeah, you said an actual point when you're talking about the rec center, because they're not being used correctly. And that's been a problem for the last 25 years. You know, I moved back from Laredo. I lived all over the place with my little history. You know, my father being a doctor, we lived all over the place. When I moved back here, I was in junior high and graduated, and I left. I graduated at 16 and was in Dallas by 17 going to school, and after that, anyway. To make a long story short, when I moved back, I moved back to open up a restaurant. I'm an executive chef. I went back to school after two years because I was involved with some partnerships with some pizza chains in Dallas. And I told myself, "You know what? What am I doing in the restaurant business if I don't know anything about it?" So I went back to hotel restaurant management and started learning. And one of the chefs said, "Go to culinary school." And then I went, you know, so. And I loved that part from it, and I've worked in that sense. But when I moved back, I saw a lot of things that were wrong. I saw that, I don't know, how can I say? I want, I want, you can say corruption. There was a lot of stuff that was wrong. We had people from the city that asked for a bribe to get a plat done in front of our attorney, you know? Stuff like that. And then you see their names pop up when that Dardenbaum incident happened a couple of years ago. And you're like, "How come they didn't stop them back then?" You know, the FBI came, they talked to everybody, they knew this was going on back then. They waited this long to do that, but, you know? So then you start thinking, "What's, what's in it? How does Laredo work?" You know, we come from a system that has, you know, we have a political system that's a duopoly, but in Laredo, it's a monopoly. And you have a type of governance here that was, you either do it this way or we're going to stop your business. And that type of mentality has gone, you know, they removed that, that, those type of regimes back in the 70s, what they called the patron system, right? And it kind of just blintered everywhere. When that happened, one person controlled, now a bunch of people control.
Right.
And you can't get anything done without trying to kiss somebody's ring. And then they won't allow you. And if they do, something's going to happen if you don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So a lot of people are afraid, and you see that, you see that fear in people and small businesses even today. And that should not be. We live in the greatest country there is. That's why we have so many people coming over, because we are the greatest country there is. And we should maintain that. You know what I'm saying?
You are really getting at what I think is a lot of the root causes of the dysfunction that occurs. Let's, let's call it what it is, right?
Dysfunction.
We have a dysfunctional city government. And the danger with that is that local government is with you from the moment you plant your feet on the ground to the moment you put your head on your pillow. And if our culture within local government is meant to stifle and deter any sort of progress unless you are a part of the inner circle, then you have the quality of life issues, the inability for small businesses to succeed, the brain drain, which I hate that term, I really do. But what I have seen, being one of the few friends that came back from college, I went to Texas State University. My smallest group of friends was, we were all from Laredo, and we were 10. And we were, you know, we were very proud to be from Laredo, and people I think still puff their chests. They claim 956. But ask me how many of those friends came back, right? And, and I can see why it can be such a deterrent for people, right? Because nepotism and because the way that you get jobs in this, in this town is sort of dictated by who you know or by political favors. And we need to, we need to nip all of that in the butt, right? And you mentioned something very interesting, which was the transition or the attempt to try to eradicate the patron system and then sort of the byproduct of the system that we have now. And I think that another point of tension is the council manager form of government that we live in, right? Which most, about 50% of local governments operate in this way with a council manager. And it was also sort of an antidote to try to break the old political system.
Absolutely.
But now we also have these, all these other issues, right? With what I perceive to be too many people playing the game, right? Too many people playing ball to maintain the system and the status quo as it is. And there has to be some cleaning up to do. There has to be better working relationships that are fostered that don't, that aren't dependent on, on the corruption and the fraud. And, you know, frankly, it's, it's an abuse of power. And it's a waste of our taxpayer dollars when you have, what is it? $98 million that we spent in a El Pico water plant, and we have not much to show for it. Sorry, I thought it was a Dardenbaum.
Yeah, no, no, you're absolutely correct. You know, that, that abuse of power, you see it, and you see it with people that work. I look at it this way, I look at it, there's four tiers in our city. You have the city council. And you kind of, right below you, you have the city manager. Then you have all the directors of the different departments, and then you have the employees. If you're a city, you know, councilwoman for this area, and somebody has a small business as a problem, they're going to contact your office. "You know what? There's something over here." Because sometimes what occurs is you're the representative of that area. You're working for those, you represent the people that live there, the people that have some businesses in that area. So a lot of them get, a lot of councilmen that I've known get offended when you call them, "Hey, you know what? This is going on over here." "Don't call me, call the department." "No, I'm calling you." Because the department's already been called 15 times, haven't done anything about it. Understand? So what happens is you have employees, we have some bad apples. We have some great people working in the city, but we also have some bad actors, you know? And those bad actors, we have to remove them. They've been there for way too long. And when something is wrong, they'll make a complaint to the director, okay? Then you make a complaint to the city council or the, or the city manager. They get the director and say, "This is going on over here, I already took care of it." So they show up to the meetings, everything's taken care of. Nothing's taken care of. So the city councilperson comes, calls back or says, "This problem, this issue was already taken care of." Three months later, another person calls about the same issue, another person calls about the same issue, or maybe the same person's calling, all of a sudden, "Oh, you have disgruntled people that don't like us." No, take care of the problem.
Because, you know, I've heard this, right? It's like, "Oh, council can't be micromanaging."
Yeah, really?
But council are the elected officials by the public, right? So if there is a breakdown in how services are provided and how issues are resolved and people try to go through the right avenues, the next best thing to do is call your councilperson. Why? Because they are going to be there when elections come around. They're going to be asking for your vote again. How are they representing the public good while they're in office?
If they're ignoring it.
If they're ignoring it, if they're trying to kick the can down the road and say, "This isn't my responsibility, this goes beyond what I can do." Well, then what are you there for?
You're absolutely correct. And that's what happens, you know? I've seen, I've talked to a lot, you know, I'm neither Republican or, I don't even vote, no. I'll tell you that story in a minute. So I can, I'm conservative. You know, I love our country, I love our constitution, and I respect the rights of everybody, it's a period. And when you, and when people start labeling others, or they're conservative, or they're Republican, or they're this and that, you start seeing a type of political oppression, political prosecution towards those businesses. And I've seen it. You did not have, you did not have the right sign outside. "You're going to food inspected, he's, he's coming after you." It used to happen before, and then it's kind of said, "Man, I haven't seen that happen," or "I haven't heard that happen." But then you start, it's still there. And it's, in the last, I would say, six years, it grew back what was not there. Understand what I'm saying?
And I feel that that is, you know, it's very interesting that you bring that up because when we talk about, for example, who council members or who elected officials feel that they need to respond to, it should be everybody. And we can talk about voter turnout all day, and I want to know why you don't vote. But when it comes down to it, you don't get to pick and choose who you represent, right? You can't say, "Oh, well, Furanito no ato, so I'm not going to..." That's not how it works.
Well, that's the way it's been working for a long time. Or that's the attitude of many that have. That's why voter turnout hasn't been around for a good, good while, you know? And I made this comparison the other day, and I was talking to several. And I told them, "You know, if you get all the employees from the county and you multiply them by two, so let's say 4,000, multiply them two, it's 8,000." Husband and wife, right? And you get the same amount in the city, what, 3,500, multiply them two, it's 7,000. You get all the people, and then you get the school districts. You get all the people that came out to vote, early voting. Where's the rest? Where's the other 90,000 that are, that are not voting? Because they're tired of this. They've lost faith in it. I lost faith.
Well, and more importantly, nobody is, let's be honest about, you know, running a campaign, you see it, right? You see that the patron system is in effect, right? Maybe not one patron, like you said, there's multiple bosses.
Yes. Just like in Brooklyn in New York, you had a little, what was called the mob. Here it's called, here, you know what I'm saying? It's the same thing.
It sounds ridiculous, but you're right.
It's the same.
You're right.
And you're like, "Really? You have to go kiss the ring of the person over there?" And you're like, "No, I'm not." You know, that's, it's sad.
And what that does too, to, as you said, it disenfranchises people, right? It breaks public trust. And the ironic part about the patron system is that the workers have a lot of power, right? The employers, the employees themselves, they, they could put their patron out of business, right? But it's just such a vicious cycle that has not been broken through because there's such a lack of investment from elsewhere, right? Nobody is down here really getting people out to vote. Son los mismos over and over again. And they just sort of like work that list that has given, that has allowed the status quo to prevail.
I'm glad you said that, because you said something, the workers can get people out. It's true. In other states, Texas is a non-union state. Other states have unions. New York had unions, all kinds of unions, okay? But if it's a non-union state, then why is the police union very much so involved in the council who wrote? They had voter fraud in the last time, and it just happened last year when they busted them. And it was going on for a while, and they blamed a councilwoman for doing that, but that's a five-foot-two woman, okay? She's not going to put a gun to anybody, say, "They did it themselves." They've been doing that for a long time. They just got caught. You know, I want to find out how many police officers are going to move to one of the other districts to vote in their favorite person if that already happened? Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Is that going to happen? Are they going to lay back or whatnot? Now that's the question that I have. That's the reason why I don't vote. I went over there legally and removed my name from the, from the list. I said, "I'm, this is gone." Voter fraud is alive and kicking, and we better figure out how to stop that. Let's go back to paper ballots.
And, and you know, especially now that you bring that up, this is an extensive conversation in the Charter Review Commission, which I was able to serve in right before running. And there is such a resistance, I feel, to really being able to, to hold this type of, well, and not just to hang on to the power, but for there to be any semblance of accountability. There is such a resistance to that. And I, I can wrap my head around it because how are you going to put yourself in a public position, in a public forum? And all of these meetings are like streamed, right? Like they're, they're all on the city's website. So you can see exactly who is against what. And then how are you going to turn around and continue to seek public office, right? Like if you are not trying to, trying to avoid that responsibility that you have to, to the public, right? Because that's, that's what we're signing ourselves up for.
Absolutely. And, you know, and it seems to be this, here we have, like I said, I'm going to go into monopoly because we have a monopoly of just one party system here in Laredo, which is the Democrat Party, unfortunately. Coming back, you're from, you went, you were in Brooklyn and all, you know?
I lived in Manhattan, I taught in the Bronx, I taught in Brooklyn, yeah.
And in Brooklyn, you know, we're talking about the five families that were talking over there. There was an old, and I was watching one of his, and he has an excellent book, which I, he was an old capo regime, capo from the Colombo family. His name is Michael Francis, excellent individual. He did time, he did one of, it was an excellent, excellent story of comeback. He paid his dues, he didn't rat anybody out. And he wrote a book called Mafia Democracy. Of why they voted for what people. You know, it goes, "We didn't vote for Republicans, we voted for Democrats." They were easy to clear up. That's all we have. And I was like, and this is from somebody that wasn't that life. And what they're using, you're like, then you kind of open up. And then in his book, he starts talking about parks. Because the biggest scam was parks. Park here, park there, make another park here. Why? Because our construction crew will go in there and change the change orders, and it's going to be, that swing set that we're going to put in there is now $300,000. It went up, and the city would make the check out. It goes, "And that's the biggest scam." The cities have the bulldozers, the cities have the manpower to do the parks themselves and cut the costs.
Yeah. You're, I'm like, "Oh, you're getting into..."
And I'm like, and I start looking, and here you go, "Well, well, I want another park over here, and I want this park over here, and I'm going to name this park because of my great-great-great-grandmother that crossed the..." You're like, "Okay, no. Let's, let's start recognizing the people that were the leaders in the community that are here." Let's 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 start recognizing the people that were the leaders in the community that are here. People that, you know what I'm saying? I I understand you love your family, I love my family as well. Okay, let's put the first woman that went into the army. Let's put the first pro basketball player, pro baseball player. You know what I'm saying? Or pro football player. Let's put those people that became some.
Because what we are watching and seeing happen is, again, back to the political favors, right? It's like, oh, let me name a park after you, let me name this playground after you, the the naming committee. If if all the committees were as active as a naming committee, maybe we would have a different city, but you know. Uh, you were getting at something else that's really important, that I I wanna mention. You know, something that I really care about is, let's take a look at our procurement processes. How does one actually go about ensuring that we are getting the best and fairest bids? That actually reflect the expenses that absolutely need to be taken, right? Because to your point about, you know, your example bringing from from mafia democracy. And thinking about what, how easy it can be to abuse and and to to have that fraud and waste in that process. Um, that is one of the the biggest things when it comes to to the inner workings of council and the day to day, right? Like you look at the agenda and it's like a hundred pages and. It, who's gonna look at that, right? But what actually happens that leads to that package being formed? And how is it that these decisions are being made to ensure financial and judicial responsibility? Because it can't just be people giving contracts to their friends.
Oh, absolutely, you know, and in that and in 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 that book and and some others that were talking about it. They control the concrete. They will get three dollars per window in New York. How many windows are in New York? Lots of windows, so when they add a construction, oh, you mean you're gonna have a hundred fifty windows? That's three dollars per window. Oh, you're gonna have three thousand windows in this building? Understand what I'm saying? So, and they were paying, because also couldn't get the job because they controlled the unions. And the unions control the votes, just like you said, the workers control the votes. Here we don't have it, but the the two primary unions are the ones that are doing. The shenanigans, if you wanna put it that way, and doing the fraud and everything else, one of them, which was the police that got caught, not the fire. And so when you look at that, you lose trust in that. So you lose trust in the people there, and I lost trust in other reasons because of. I, you know, I've been dealing with, uh, I've been here for a long time, I've got a lot of students. I have students that that are in the police, a lot of them are fire, we were counting, I think there was twenty-eight firemen that came out of here in the early two thousands. There's thirty-six peace officers that came out of here, one of them just became a Texas Ranger. Not saying because of the, because of this it became that, but this, I guess, you know, they came out of the school, so that's something we're proud of. Uh, give them a little bit of a discipline, you know? When you get, um, start looking at all that stuff, and you start seeing what occurred. And I started seeing the corruption that was around at that timeframe. And we were in the middle of lawsuits with the city and some other things were going on, they used to put a police officer right there in the parking lot. They used to put another one right here, so when my students would leave, they'd get a ticket right there, they would leave that way, get a ticket that way. That type of harassment still continued. Kind of, I saw that dissipate, and then I saw it kind of come up. And it's surging again, so we better take control, like you said, it's dysfunctional. We have a dysfunctional city government, and we have to take the reins and start holding it back, or else. We won't be here for a while. You know, uh, McAllen is a lot more job-friendly here for small businesses, San Antonio the same way, Eagle Pass is moving on.
Even Brownsville. Laredo and Brownsville were constantly kicking each other off the highest poverty rate and. What has happened in in Brownsville over the last ten or so years is. You know, they they really started to get their stuff together when it came to economic development and that downtime revitalization that. Um, where where do we have that here, right? What what do we have to chauffeur here? And to your point about, we have, if we're not careful. How much longer can we go on like this? We have issues that are so pressing and so massive. Water, right? The water issue. That if we don't get it together and start to really focus on the big rock issues that we should be worrying about. Not these like individual, right, as you said, uh, targeting of. Of people and and abusing positions of power to to sort of. Uh, target that or or try to try to uh eliminate that, then we are not. Then we're not doing our jobs, right? We, again, we're missing the forest with the trees, we are misusing. The positions that we're in when we could be doing something good, we could be actually solving problems. That are longstanding and that will we're just gonna gonna continue to pass on to the next generation because. If we remember, day zero is what, twenty forty-two, twenty forty-four of when the Rio Grande. Might potentially start running water.
You know, I tell this to people. And then that it comes out in there too, that one of the major problems is is the secondary water source. And the secondary water source, Mexico owes us money in payment, they haven't paid us. I think we should tell Mexico, you know what? Cough up the money that you owe us, but we don't wanna do that because of the international trade. Okay. I look at it and go, we have a problem, not with the Mexican people, because the Mexican people are beautiful people. Okay, they're, it's a great culture. We have a problem within the government that's there, and that abusive power that you have over there. Over there you do have patron systems all over, from as soon as you cross all the way down to. To Guatemala, you have pa- patron systems in every town and every, you know, okay, we understand that. When we had, there's a treaty, when the treaty was signed at Texas, not the Treaty of Guadalupe. Uh, was the Treaty of the Sp- the uh Mexican-American War. When we ended up, because this part from here, from the Rio Grande to the Nueces was kind of no man's land. And that's the truth, that was the border for Mexico, the Nueces was a border for Texans. For Texians, the border was the Rio Grande, because that is Rio Bravo. For the Mexicanos, the Rio, the Rio Bravo was the Nueces, for the Texans, the Rio Bravo, the Tejanos was the Rio Grande. That's basic, so this seventy miles that we had from the Nueces was kind of lost. So during the the Spanish-American War, you know, the Mexican-American War, um. Polk made, there was a treaty, and we're supposed to have three dams. If we don't get ourselves moving and build a dam here in Webb County. To subsidize their secondary water, so if people say, oh, where the river is coming from, no, if we don't do that now, I guarantee you that. McAllen or Brownsville's gonna make one. Okay? That's coming. So we better get that under, instead of trying to figure out what we, what you do, that's protected. I'm all for conservation, I'm a hunter, you can see that. People say, no, you go out there, you know, you preserve the animals. You, you're actually cutting out the older ones. You know what I'm saying? You're not, you know, you don't go out there and just shoot, it's not called killing, it's called hunting, you know, and you do it for a reason. Um, we have to conserve. And we have to conserve, yeah, I'm all for that, but there's some reasons how we can do it, there's betterments how we can do it, and if we can benefit to things. Let's do it.
Right.
Okay?
Because why, why is it that we have had a secondary water source committee for however long we've had it? And where, yep, yeah, parte de eso, where's the primary source committee, right? How are we looking at, as you say, the preservation of the river and the water that we do capture? That we should be encouraging to to be reclaimed and reused? And why are we already, right, what I what I see happening is. We are all too willing to let go of our municipal water rights by having this conversation of. A private secondary water source that is twenty-four miles up the road. And that is supposed to miraculously just give us all this water. That isn't going to be treated, that we're gonna have to take care of still, right? And at what price tag? And what rights are we letting go at that point that the city owns right now? And is it for a lack of knowledge and expertise, which is, that can be solved? Or is it for a lack of care, right? Is it for, i- is there something else going on?
You know, I see I see that, you know, uh, we have a a new. Development, a new city or town that's gonna be built up uh up the road on thirty-five. They already have water. It's the same water in Webb County. Twenty years, they couldn't figure it out, but they figured it out in what, three years? You know what I'm saying? And 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 you and you look at, and you look at it like this, and you're like, wait a minute, you know, the county uh had one. There's a, the water on the county roads, not county roads, there's land. That was allocated to each county that cannot be sold and by the state, and whatever you use that money for. It's to lower the taxes of of the schools, period. Um, this goes back eighteen hundred some something or other, that's a law, and uh. There's water there, how can we not use that water and resell it and lower the taxes of the schools? Nobody figured that out. And, um. You know, the hunting rights, they give them out, but that's a county, but you know, they they issue them out, and then the person gets, um. He he, uh, they lease it for for this amount, and then they're out there shooting deer. For five thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying? Why can't the county? Do that? You know what I'm saying?
We have to be asking the questions of how can we solve our own problems if it's a possibility, because to your point. Why isn't the rate of accessing that water from the aquifers? Why do we have to give that up? To a private organization, company to do that for us, and then turn around. And sell it to us at how many times the rate? Very basic questions that have not been answered, that the public has not been involved in. And that we have to wonder if our best interest is being represented.
Absolutely, you know, and. There's a lot of stuff, security, we have, we have a fentanyl issue, we have a crisis at the border. People want security, uh, but there's people that don't want security, okay? Now, I'm gonna talk about the wall, people, some people want the wall, some people don't want the wall, some, I see both sides of it. And now I see, okay, we don't want the wall because Trump did it, okay, get you, he's the most polarized man there is. But yet, we all voted for the wall when Obama and Clinton pushed it, but nothing was done. You know what I'm saying? And when Bush pushed it, we, everybody wanted the 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 wall and the security, but nothing was ever done. Um, all the contracts were out, people got money. You know, they were clearing it up and down, but nobody cared, but now when they started building it, oh, wait a minute, it's against him. So we need to have some type of protection. People say, how are we gonna stop this influx of drugs, influx of human trafficking that's going, that's an issue here. And. People don't wanna talk about it, then when you say something, they say, oh, you're going against human rights, no, uh, we understand human rights, that's why we don't want that to occur.
Well, and I think when we look at at that issue, and and you're right, the fentanyl is such a big concern in in our community, right? How many deaths have we not had? Due to overdoses, and and I think we need to look at our bridges and our port systems, because. We know that an overwhelming number of these drugs are coming right under our noses, right, right through the bridges. And and the bridge is such an important source of revenue for our town, right? So we need to connect the dots and make sure that we are protecting our community while we're protecting. One of our high sources of revenue too, because what it's resulting in is a lot of undue harm, right? And and we we don't have, uh, there's been some efforts made, right, uh, the city joined one of the commissions on. Um, on Rakan and and trying to to find ways to eradicate. The fentanyl, um, the fentanyl epidemic, but what we have yet to do is. Really, as you, I think you you mentioned this earlier, right, like, um. We we have such advancements now, right, that how are we looking at what technologies we can use and improve? Um, that, you know, don't necessarily have to come at a cost to the city, we can look at federal funds, we can look at. At funding that that comes from from the state, uh, when it comes to border security and how to. Reallocate that money so that we make sure that our bridge system is. The tightest that it can be, so that we are, you know, really coming down on the problem at the ports, um, because. It it really will continue to be an issue, and and we are, I think, to your point, uh, a lot of it gets politicized. But then that causes us to steer away from actually coming to the solution, right? Which, which it's happening right under our noses.
Absolutely, and we need to do that, and and people saying, you know, there's, I I see it on both sides, and and you see the spectrum of. The difference in questions and the rebuttals, and they say, well, it's because we're the the largest users of drugs, that's why it's coming in. Or the word, you know. You know, but then we have to start looking at the crime rate, okay? They're using our 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 sixteen-year-olds to traffic. Humans, or, you know, they get a car, they give them so much money, take some money, oh, then they get caught, now they're in trouble, but they're using youngsters to do so. Because they know they can get away with it, or when they're eighteen, they're out, or what have you, right, unless they died, and they can. And, um, so, nobody's making those questions, I had a, um. It's an interesting individual, she's an activist towards children here in Texas and throughout. Her name's Sheena Rodriguez, and I was talking to her the other day, and she goes, Paul, you know, since two two thousand ten, the Inspector General has said that there's been over. Across the border, three hundred thousand children that have crossed have gone missing. I mean, one, they're they're placed into prostitution, second, and the workforce, third, organ trans. Black market or- organ transplant, you know? And when you look at that, that to me is heartbreaking, and that's coming through here. We're allowing that to happen, you know, there was an issue that last year, was it last year, that. That they found fifty-two people dead in a Walmart in San Antonio, but that passed through here. That passed through ports. How come it wasn't stopped? You know, so, there is, there's issues that we have. There's issues as a city that we we can do, especially you all, if, you know, you get elected. People need to stop that for the benefit of everything that's going on, for the safety, you know? Um, we can't cry cry, um, human injustices when we don't stand up for. Okay, we need to protect them. Okay, and we, and people say, no, but the wall's not gonna protect them, well, it's gonna deter them. Either that, or we charge Mexico. A little bit more for crossing their their imports over here, charge them more, and I guarantee you that they'll take care of the border. Understand what I'm saying? You know what? Now for every truck that comes in here, it's gonna be another hundred and fifty dollars per. And that state of taxes can do that, raise raise the volume of everything that's coming into into, we don't need the federal government to do that, the state of taxes can do that. Raise the tariffs, and I guarantee you that Mexico will.
Yeah.
Okay, and. You know, we care as people, because they're neighbors, we're caring individuals, we care about Mexico. Okay? We care about Mexico, but does Mexico care about us? That's the big question, especially now that they're building a massive railroad system. Down south of the Yucatan that's gonna bypass the Panama Canal, which is gonna connect the Pacific to the Gulf. Are they really caring for us? Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And and, are they?
No, yeah. We need to like really look at, you know, because that is such an important relationship, even for Laredo. But it it cannot be a one-way street, and it can't be, um, the only focus too, right? Because, uh, when it comes to Laredo being the number one port, and so, yeah. That we hold, right, uh, to Mexico and and internationally. Um, we should have that same consideration and focus when it comes to the local economy to. To maintain maintaining and ensuring that Laredo stays one of the safest towns in the country, because. On paper, it is, right, the crime rate is is really low in Laredo.
In paper, it's very low, but then you look at it, you're like, well, what do you mean, the assaults have gone down, this has gone down, it stayed the same. We've only have twelve murders, it's gone down, but we have eight hundred, uh, what was it, nine hundred and something sex offenders? Sex offenders, those are the ones who are caught. But yet, every time you open up social media. There's a massive fight in every nightclub in Laredo every weekend. And people are there with their phones and they're uploading it all over the place. Is it that, you know, is it that safe? You know, we kind of blind ourselves and say, we live in the safe, nothing's happening here in Laredo. We don't wanna talk to that individual, like what happened with, with the mayor, he didn't wanna talk to the candidate, the vice president. I'll be talking to everybody. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? I'll be talking to every single person that's running. Because you never know if they might be the one that's gonna be representing you. You don't shut the doors. And he says, oh, you know, he has to change rhetoric, well, his rhetoric saved the border, we have a cartel wars, isn't that? And we're kind of forgetting, then the next day came out on. In, on Facebook, and the person's in the Puente. Videotaping and all you hear is machinins, brought that daylight, you know, you, you, that, you know, sounded worse than Beirut. And, 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 and people say. Oh, it's not happening. It's not happening here, of course it's not, but it's happening two miles down. And we better be careful. And we better be careful, and. But, you know, there's a lot of wrongs, like you said, and you, I, I like the word that you said dysfunctional, cause, uh, cause it, it is what it is. It's a dysfunctional city government. And we better start taking control of it. And by eliminating or adding more on the charter. To make it harder to take control of it. People aren't gonna come here, they're gonna move somewhere else.
Yeah, and, yeah, the, you know, the, the charter revision meets twice every ten years. Barely, you know, um, and. And there is, like I mentioned, right, there feels like there's a lot of resistance to, to the change that. Would bring more people into the fold, that would start to rebuild that public trust, um. And I think one of the biggest things that we can do is strengthen our ethics code. Uh, and I'm saying that as someone that aspires to, to be in council, knowing that. That is the tool to hold council accountable, right? And, and no matter who it is that has to be held accountable. There has to be the mechanism to do it and. The fact that it's not there is a big concern, uh, because then what are we meeting for?
Yeah, you know, they, they, you're absolutely cor- correct. You know, there are several, several, a couple of years back, they raised the. What is it, recall ra- rate up, the percentage? Why don't you lower it? Lower it to three hundred people? How about three hundred people? Why don't you lower it to three hundred people? I guarantee you, everybody's gonna walk straight. How about this? How about one term? Because if you need. Another term to figure out, then you, you have potholes and speed bumps and traffic lights.
Oh, and, and there were conversations there that were happening about trying to figure out ways to. Extend the terms or to, to make it long, more terms and. Uh, I think one, that's one of the biggest dangers that, that we have, right, is, uh, we don't have the ability. To, to, to have at least the accountability as a ballot box, right? Uh, for, for what it's worth, right, we, we, we've already spoken about. Low voter turnout and we've spoken about the disenfranchised mind of, of voters, but. For what it's worth, every four years, right, you have that ability, so can you imagine not having terms? Or not having, uh, that mechanism to, to hold people accountable, that's very dangerous.
This is me, and I'll say this to every single one of them out there, there should be one. Term, four years, that's it. Thank you so much. Get a plaque. Okay? If you, you don't have another four years to figure out what's wrong with your neighborhood, if you don't figure it out now. You don't need another four years. You're just gonna learn how to grift better. That's basically the way it is. I have lost faith in what we have. We have a dysfunctional government, our police, look at, you know, here. Here I get two types of people that call. On a weekly basis. One, the concerned parent that the child is being bullied. That comes up. And the woman that is being stalked. Was beat up by her husband or ex-boyfriend. Doesn't know what to do. Okay, or a coworker is stalking her. And sometimes you tell them. Martial action, you know, and I'm gonna tell you this, martial arts is a beautiful thing for women to do. My wife does capoeira, she's one of the, the, the highest ranked professoras in Brazil. And learn a lot from her. She was competing when there were no men and women's divisions back in the nineties, and she was champion of Brazil, so you know what I'm saying, so it's a. Um. It, martial arts will give you self-confidence, self-esteem. It's gonna teach you how to defend yourself, but in the. The issue of self-defense with women, most women are going to face somebody that they know. And they know on a personal basis. Might be a family member, might be a coworker, might be a friend of the family's, might be a friend. And then something's gonna happen. That's usually how it happens, that's the stats. Okay? So it's the emotional, mental. Turn is a little bit different. Everybody thinks you're gonna be walking down the street, somebody's gonna grab your purse and turn around and get, can happen. But the majority of women that get attacked are attacked by somebody that they know. Okay, so menta- mentally wise, it's very hard to grasp. Okay? Uh, so, you send them off to the police. Tell them. Do a police report. Tell them what happens, have this. Sometimes we call back and how did it go? How does, have you follow up? The police have been dropping the balls left and right. And at, at first I said, nah, maybe they didn't call, right? But it happened to somebody that's very close to me, we went in there. Who cares? And this person was sending emails on social media that was gonna rape people. And the police lax it off. County attorney laxed it off, the other person laxed it off, you're like, until something happens. And people come out, oh, I reported that, and I reported this, I reported that, then they come out and say, oh, that's social media fake news. No. It's the lack. Of your duty, due diligence of what you're supposed to be doing. And it's not the police officer that's walking the beat as per se. It's the brass. That's, that's doing this, so some, there has to be. A calling out of that department. Uh, I think, I hope we have, in, uh, we have some good, I think our legal department is fairly adequate. Very good guys that are working there. Um, I think that, now that's before, I think, but they also have to start. Standing up for the, the citizens of Laredo. Okay, cause they work, they work for the citizens, not work for the cap, the commissioners or the directors as per se. Even though they have to, uh, protect them, right, if something happens. What I'm saying is. They have to start looking up and start renegotiating some of these contracts that are out there. We need a citizens review board. We don't need an internal affairs. And that's something that has to be done statewide, cause you see this trend throughout. And we have great officers, don't get me wrong, you know, because people. Will snip and clip and put stuff together and say, oh, he said this, no. We have some great officers and we have to protect those good officers. But the bad ones, the bad apples, the bad actors, we have to remove, period. And for them not to be able to play musical chairs and go to another department. Which is what happens here. They do something wrong at Laredo Police Department, you see them at U S D. Do something wrong at U S D, you see them at the sheriff's. Do something over there, you see them as task force over here. You see something wrong, you know what I'm saying, so. We have to make sure that they don't have that. And if you do it through the internal affairs, which is a problem, and if you talk to several other public officials that are involved with law enforcement, they'll tell you that's the problem. Um. So, some type of citizens review board needs to be placed. Okay, I'm not against defunding, because criminals will have the right to have guns, and they, they get the rights anyway. And the rights is not by right, they just do it, you know? And, uh. So they, so it's not the good citizen, it's, it's, it's the bad, the bad apples, it's not destroy the good citizens. And, um. So I don't know, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, you know, in, in, as you mentioned, I lived in, in New York City and. There, there is a civilian re- review board, um, an oversight board over there, so. Definitely think that that's something that could be explored and looked at. Um, and as you mentioned, right, even like statewide, um. I mean, yeah, we, we just saw in the news yesterday, right, uh, uh, one of the, the sheriff's deputies is being accused of sexual assault. And, you know, uh, he, he just, I think whatever it was, that he just got there, right? Six, a few months ago or something like that. So how are we gonna make sure that? That person, if they're found to be guilty, that they can't just, as you've mentioned, go play musical chairs and find the next department that will take them? Um, because if we are serious about public safety and we're serious about maintaining. Um, our crime rates low, then we also need to hold the people that, that we're entrusting with that job. Uh, accountable to the highest standards.
Absolutely, and. You know, we're, we're, we're a nation of checks and balances. And we have to maintain that. Right now, there's, there's a lot of checks being made out. For the balances. You know, so you know what I'm saying? And, and unfortunately. You know, I'm for protecting, I'm from, from Laredo, I grew up in Laredo, L- Laredo used to have an old billboard, I keep saying this to everybody. They used to say, keep, let's keep the buck in Laredo. Okay? Until everybody, don't buy a car here, buy in San Antonio, buy in Divine, it's a lot cheaper than buying it here. You know, you're like. You know, that price gouging that we have, um. And right now with, um. With the way things are moving, I think we have to pre- prepare for that. We have to start looking where, what it is. We have to start preparing our smart, and I can say this again, small, small businesses, cause our small businesses. By the last administration, where they were destroyed. They were completely annihilated. They didn't care no doubt about anybody.
And, and like to, to your point about where we're, we're putting our money, where our mouth is, right, uh. Are we going to prioritize the local economy as much as we are going to prioritize? The economic symbolism that Laredo has internationally and nationwide? And. How are we making sure that we're not just saying that, but that we're actually supporting small businesses? And to your point, encouraging people to spend money locally, right? Support local businesses, uh, one thing that. I always look out for is Small Business Saturday, or the farmer's markets. Or, you know, the vendors markets where all the local businesses come and gather and, and they make it so that. Uh, so that people are able to, to, to invest their money, right? Because that's what it is, it's you, you're reinvesting your dollars. In the local economy and you're making sure that Laredo is able to hold its own economically. And, and I think that a lot of that has to do, as we've gone back and forth, right, um. Making it as important, um, and as much of a priority as, as everything else.
Absolutely, and I made this study, not to trifle with, with our city, cause I love our city. But. To see where we're at, to see what we're gonna, see, I was looking more like where, which way I should move, cause I'm always doing this. So, see where we're going, what should I be paying attention to? I'd like to be side. You know, hit from the side. So, and then I said, you know what, put this in there, and then they did an excellent job. And you started looking, and, and it gives you the websites and it gives you the reasons and where we're at and where it's coming from. You know, it tells you where the research for you to go and look, and see, ah, you know what, we have something here. Well, you know what, this, we have some, something. And, um, I think. In the sense of crime and our police and everything else. The faith, I don't have, I reiterate that all the time. Um, I think the numbers don't match up with what the reality is here. Understand what I'm saying? I just, there's something. Just doesn't.
It doesn't translate.
With the, yeah, it just doesn't add up, it doesn't, you know, and, um. It just might, you know, uh, we have to protect ourselves, our water, our water, for sure. And, uh, and get that book, cause it's a, it's a good book. You'll, you'll, you'll enjoy it, because he, he, he looks at, he talks about. The side. Of that corrupt life. And how they took advantage of that. With the government. You know what I'm saying? And how it, how they were able to manifest that. He talks about the unions voting in, he talks about everything else, talking about that. And you see it here.
Well, and I, I really appreciate what you said, you said, I, I love my city, right? I'm not putting all of this together just to. Try to bash, but I think it's because we love Laredo. That we want so much more. And I think, you know, uh, for anyone, um, that, that ever. Puts themselves in a position of leadership, elected or otherwise. We have to think about. Are we doing the absolute best that we can? And if not, where are the points of growth? And where do we have to be focusing on to make sure that we are the best and we're doing the best for our people?
Absolutely, I wanna thank you for coming out. It was, it was actually, it was an excellent conversation. And that's the only way we can, we have to convey, to find out where we're supposed to be going for, it's not. I'm gonna pout, yell, and it has to be done this way because we're all somewhere, no, no. Let's sit down, let's look at, let's strategize this whole thing. Oh, you all better do it this way, no. Don't come here with threats. You know, we're, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of tough guy wannabes, and there's a lot of tough guys that still run around here in Laredo that are gonna say no. Okay, and we need that type of men and women to stand up for our community and say, no, not today. Let's think of this rationally and move forward. You know, cause we're in a very dangerous position. Very, very dangerous position, and. The division in the country, the division in our city. Dramatic. The comments that you see in some of these Facebook stuff, you're like, really? You're gonna do what? You're gonna come after who? You understand what I'm saying, so. Um. It's sad, but at the same time, I tell you, we need to put something together for all of us to start moving forward.
Yeah, it, it's a wake-up call, and, and as you're saying, we're, we're at a pivotal moment, right, where. Um, we have potentially an opportunity to, to change things or. To maintain the status quo and to see where that leads us. In ten, twenty years, and it can't be, can't be anyplace good.
Yeah, you, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. Now, let's talk about your campaign. Early votes, it's a couple of weeks away.
Early voting starts October twenty first, uh, runs all the way to November. November second, I believe, uh, fourth, thir- November third.
It's a Sunday.
That's a Sunday, and.
They're throwing it that close to?
Yeah, the only day when there's no, no voting is November, November fourth.
Which is a Monday, the Tuesdays, big Tuesday.
And then November fifth is election day. Um, and I would encourage everybody to get acquainted with the candidates. You can find me on Facebook, Instagram. My website is W W W dot Tanya Benavides dot com, and that's, uh, Tanya with two N's. Uh, my phone number is nine five six six two nine thirteen sixty. And I am just really looking forward to bringing some change to, to Laredo. Uh, you know, being out there and talking to people, hearing their concerns. I think. There's more that brings us together for what we want and the vision that we have for our city. Than the things that don't, and that is what I'm leaning in with.
Absolutely, folks, we'll get this out there, you know? Don't do as I do, I've made a choice by myself not to vote. I just don't trust it, you know, I, I got a new shirt out that says, I'll keep saying voter fraud, you know? And it was proven. Uh, so, go out there, we keep the faith, but study each and every candidate. Do not get pushed into going for one candidate or the other because. Of a promise to, for a job or not. This is a bigger picture, you want a. Good community for your children, your grandchildren in the future. And we have to maintain that, okay, we have to maintain that, uh, here in Laredo, it's a beautiful town, and our nation as well. Our nation as well, so we'll leave you with this. You all stay safe, be safe, and God bless you all. It's the next time, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.